Next item on the agenda is personnel recommendations, superintendent's personnel recommendations.
Yes, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration, personnel recommendations that I wish to recommend approval and they are presented in categories six through seventeen.
And did you want to call attention to the items in section seventeen?
Yes, unfortunately, I regret to report the death of one of our special education teachers, Leslie Coffey, who passed away on August tenth. She had been an educator with Akron Public Schools for thirty-four years. For many of us in the administration building, I also regret to report the death of Valerie Edgerson. She was a safety team member in Student Services who passed away on August seventeenth. She's been an employee with the Board of Education for five years.
Dr. Autry, you have a comment?
Yes, I just also wanted to acknowledge the passing of Valerie Edgerson, who not only was an employee, but we were working very closely together when our children were at Miller South. I know that she also worked very closely with students at East and having a drama club at some period of time and was very passionate about sharing Black history. And she will definitely be missed and I just wanted to send condolences out to her family, Tia Tyler and Brianna, her children.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes, I think that whenever we lose a staff member is definitely a sad time and one that we should, you know, thank their families for, you know, lending them to us. So both staff members are just into their families. You know, thank you for lending your family member to us and to our family and to Valerie specifically, who I have gotten to know over the last, you know, seven, eight years before she even started working for APS. You know, she is a, has, was a real, you know, advocate for children and an advocate for, you know, the safety of our community and our community growing. And it's definitely a loss to our community, so I just wanted to make sure I said that.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. All right, if this time we'll entertain a motion.
Sound move. Second.
Thank you, a motion by Ms. McKittrick and a second by Ms. Autry for the personnel recommendations. Any comments? Hearing and seeing none, will call please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
This is McKittrick?
Yeah.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the resolutions and motions presented in category twenty-two.
Entertain a motion for the consent agenda items.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Mr. Alexander on the consent agenda. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
I do have a question.
Yes, Ms. Autry.
I can just get, we can get a little bit of information about the school psychology intern program. Is there anyone I think that can speak to that? Just interested in learning a little bit more what it's that about.
Right, I can let Dr. McWilliams Woods handle that one. This is an annual funding source that we get from the Department of Education. Go ahead, Dr. McWilliams Woods.
Yeah, this is a longstanding program that Mrs. Brady can also chime in if there's additional questions, but we serve as a site for psychology, school psychology interns. So as they're being placed through their training program, they come here and the state provides funding to support that because of the kind of longstanding shortage of psychos, school psychologists across the state. They do an incentive type program for districts to be able to support the interns as they're in the school districts to finish up their training. Thank you.
Thank you, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, will call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
This is Mansfield?
Yes.
This is McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Thank you.
And finally, Mr. President, I wish to recommend approval of the business affairs recommendations presented in category twenty-four.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Sound move.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Mr. Alexander on the business affairs agenda items. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, will call please.
Dr. Hall?
Hi.
This is Mansfield?
Sorry, yes.
This is McKittrick?
Yeah.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, superintendent's report, oh, Dr. Akbar, go ahead.
Yes, I'm sorry, I missed the comment section and I meant to ask this question. My apologies. So with the, in the business affairs recommendations, there was a rental agreement with FAST and we haven't had the conversation about athletics or extracurricular activities. I just wanted to ask that if we decided not to move forward with, or we were, if we decided to continue forward with the resolution that we passed a few weeks ago, you know, I want to make sure that, you know, that we're still not requiring them to pay money if they can't have activities in the swimming pool, so.
That's correct, they wouldn't pay if there's no access to the pool for swimming activities.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that, Mr. Bravo.
Glad you caught me just in time. President, or at this point, superintendent's report, we're going to return to our athletics discussion. We had said at our retreat, once the governor's order, when we actually had the text in our hands that we could read to the board, so I'm going to turn it over to the superintendent who has presentation.
Yeah, a report, Mr. Vassalati's on with us. We've had the athletic team go through review, the governor's order, also the updates from the Ohio High School Athletic Association and also through depthful conversations with Summit County Public Health, where, you know, I don't know if any of our board members have been on their website, but they have a tool where you can actually zero in on every zip code within our county, including the zip codes in the Akron Public Schools and actually slice and dice the data on age, gender, race, in terms of infections in the different zip codes within Akron Public Schools. But right now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Vassalati to, you know, kind of review where we are right now.
Thank you, Dr. James, and thank you, members of the Board of Education. A lot of gray area in this issue, obviously, as Senior Naya Booker hinted at earlier. Awesome to hear from those student athletes and parents. But we thank you for your careful and thoughtful deliberation for fall athletics and APS. So just to piggyback on Dr. James, yes, the latest from Summit County Public Health did, one of the many facts presented in that report did designate a decreasing rate of incidents for children contracting COVID, which is lower than the adult population to begin with, but it has been on the decline for the past couple of weeks, so that's a positive sign. Also, I know we heard a lot about swimming and the fantastic job that Coach Dial and her crew do over at Firestone following protocols and have done all summer. Want to echo that across the district really for all of our sports. We're really pleased throughout the summer through phases one, two, and three of our workouts that we got approved from Summit County Health that those protocols were followed very well and we had very few incidents of COVID. The three that we had came from the outside and didn't result in any more than one student athlete per each of those three teams, so that was a positive. We certainly thought about this and discussed it a lot the past couple of weeks and as you've received from Dr. James, really the proposal we've put together, the schedules and protocols and so forth, have really four broad aims and the first of which listed on there is to reduce community interactions potentially for our student athletes. So that, you know, for example, most of our competitions would be within the city series, within our own league, excluding of course the OHSA tournament at the end of each season and for some of our very low contact sports, non-league competition, for example, in tennis and golf. But we thought keeping it within our league, within the city and really reducing the traditional non-league opponents that our teams play, reducing their schedules a bit would help from a health and safety standpoint. So we're not interacting with outside communities, we're taking longer trips. We also aim to reduce the crowd level, the spectators at our contests. And by doing that, of course, keeping the crowds down, lessen the likelihood of group gatherings, congregations, and so forth. So we're following state protocol there and the local health department with the proposal that we would cap our crowd participation at fifteen percent of a venue's capacity. And in terms of ticket sales, only allow pre-sale to happen, no tickets available at the game. And the tickets would be limited to four per student athlete the day before the contest that they would obtain after their practice or a parent would, who's picking him or her up after practice. So in the, in a lot of protocols, of course, we follow the venues themselves. We would also look to eliminate concession stand, the use of locker rooms to prevent congregating there. Even though Summit County Health technically does allow locker room usage now, we just felt like we would keep that away from our student athletes and coaching, congregating and using in the traditional sense because it's such a hotbed really for the spread of a virus and infection because of the close quarters there. We also thought in terms of our venues, as I mentioned, and centralizing that process more so than usual. So that, for example, in volleyball, instead of using all six of our traditional high school gyms, we would only use three. And then also for soccer, we would only use two venues potentially, one being Ellet and the other really outside of our district at the Copley Road Complex, which is run by the city of Akron. In terms of football, we could potentially use Ellet only because of the artificial turf there and the ability to use that field over and over again without wearing it out. We could potentially use Booktul Stadium as well for two or three Saturdays if needed. It kind of depends how we juggle the soccer schedule moving forward. But the point being, we would centralize our use of the venues, you know, in order to keep those protocols in very few places with the same staff members. And speaking of staff, we would certainly staff that not only with as many APS security staff and APD officers as usual, but potentially increase that as well. Want to thank Mr. Rambler already for offering his help through Student Services with extra staff and APD. Because, you know, at Ellet, for example, there's a fence around the perimeter of the stadium and folks like to congregate outside the fence, you know, who didn't pay for a ticket and still kind of see the action. So we would count on our security staff to clean that up so that people aren't congregating out there. And of course, in the games themselves, through state protocols, through the ODH recommendations, we would block off seating and seat every other row and family members certainly could seat together. But other than that, they're social business, of course. So all those protocols would potentially be followed and, and like I said, I feel good about, we feel good really about our team, what our team did throughout the summer and we would continue that at contests this fall. This is such a complex issue, you know, I know there's no easy answer, right or wrong, as was stated earlier. And I think one thing that I've thought of recently and heard from many other ADs throughout Summit County who are participating now is that, you know, in terms of school, our kids obviously are mandated to attend school compulsory and parents have to find them a way of getting there or paying attention at home if they're remote learning. But with athletics, it is voluntary and the OHSA does provide now a form which we would certainly utilize, acknowledgement form of this special circumstance this year with the pandemic and the risk of COVID. And we will make that available and required for our parents and student athletes to sign so they know going in what the risks are that are a little different than usual this year. The Summit County Health, which we filed throughout the summer, has maintained that October first recommendation, contact sports. Really, the thinking behind it was to let kids get used to going to school and the protocols at school. And of course, for us with remote learning, that's not a necessary step for our kids to the physical building again and all the protocols in regard to COVID-19 there. So for the schedule we proposed, we kind of bridged the balance between a lot of districts around us in Summit County are starting right now full go with all sports. Yet we also consider the guidance from Summit County Health. So we felt like golf and tennis being the two sports which are least likely to result in the spread of a virus easily, social distance and so forth, should pick up where they left off with their competition. And then we have the other low contact or no contact sports, the volleyball and cross country, which would potentially start their city seasons and again, city series only here in the first couple of weeks of September, excuse me. And then with our high contact sports of soccer, football, because of the number of boys soccer teams we have to play a full city schedule, we would look to start them September eighth and the girls a week later. And then our first football contest potentially September seventeenth. All of our athletes who haven't been together with their teams now in a couple of weeks will need some time, especially those high contact sports, to get acclimated. Football, for example, with the equipment they're required to wear, they would have to begin in helmets again and gradually get on all their gear, be ready for contact on the fourth day, so that'll take some time. So we wanted to strike a balance between, you know, the schools that have started again and are full go of fall sports now, we couldn't just jump back into them. And so we proposed the schedules which you've seen, which wait from tennis beginning August thirty-first because they're the first to jump back in along with golf and then through football, which starts September seventeenth. And by that, I mean with competition. Certainly, we would recommend that practice be allowed to begin immediately. If the board sees fit, to allow us to have fall athletics because our students, athletes need to get back into school conditioning again with their teams. But we wanted to balance the schedule out with considerations from the health department along with the governor's guidance, you know, last week in terms of supporting the OHSA and fall sports beginning right away. You know, there are a lot, there are risks for sure. And I've thought about that a lot, there's also the risk, and I think some of our parents said on this earlier, of the kids not playing and the effect that might have on their mental and emotional health. And then also it provides them idle time and, you know, teenagers and idle time aren't always a good combination. So I consider that as well too, when I think about this issue of the virus and the risks involved. I feel really good about our coaches and how much they care about our student athletes and the fact that they would follow our protocols. So again, I thank the board for their consideration to allow fall athletics to begin again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vassalati. Mr. President, also today I spoke with the city of Akron's health equity expert, Tamika Rose, had a short interchange with her about, you know, her role and that she referred me to Summit County Public Health. And I believe Donna Skoda from Summit County Public Health is on the, on our, at our board meeting virtually. And I had a conversation with her early today about, you know, some of the risks. We talked about, you know, how we're a little different than many of our surrounding districts because we're going virtually and if she can, I'd like her to talk about some of the things that we discussed earlier.
Okay, Dr., Mr. James, I'm on the call, right, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thanks, I'm sorry, I can't remember if it was star six or star three, I apologize. Um, but no, I am on and thank you for allowing me to speak. When we wrote those recommendations, we were unsure of when schools were going back in or what they were doing. The plans were very, very up in the air and some are still up in the air. But we proposed three models looking at these risks and it's all around the risk. But we came out first with fall sports, saying that if you waited until October one, it would give you some opportunity to get back in school, wait a couple of weeks. Because we had heard from the governor's office that they were going to delay all of school starts to the middle of September. Well, that didn't happen, but we thought if you at least gave schools a couple of weeks to get back in, they'd be able to layer on that risk and then we would be able to add another risk when you combine folks outside of your bubble because that's where your disease risk really goes up. However, the schools opened in a lot of different models. Some are all online, some are, you know, doing a hybrid model, some are doing, excuse me, five days in and they're big enough, they have buildings, they can do that. So we work closely with all of the superintendents trying to work what fits for districts. So I did talk to a few of you today and spoke about, you know, because you're all online, your risk is lower because you're only going to open up one layer. So we don't worry about you when those kids play, taking it back to the school buildings because that's where it gets really bad. And we probably have had, in the last two to three weeks, we've probably had about six to eight groups of folks from sports cheering that have been, have broken out into, I wouldn't say outbreaks, but we've had about fifteen cases that have resulted from that. So what I think I heard this evening from your athletic director was that they're considering all of those things. They're saying we've got to stay six feet apart, we're going to open up a slow roll, we're going to allow our kids to go back slowly and pace forward. When I talk about COVID and delays and deadlines, it is only from a disease perspective. We are trying to control the disease because we really want kids to be able to stay in school once they start and we want them to be able to continue and finish the school year. But what we're worried about is if we get a ton of outbreaks, then we're going to have to, people are going to be out at school because it's going to be a lot of contact. So what we have been saying to districts is you're doing a hundred percent online, which again, I said, reduces that risk. It sounds like you have thought out location, groups of children and teachers and faculty staying together so you're not going to have a whole bunch of mixing. The season is shorter, there are some kind of wacky rules in the governor's orders about the twenty-four hours and all of that stuff, JV to varsity. But all in all, it looks like you've thought out a lot of what could go wrong. That congregation before and after, it isn't so much what the coaches do during the game other than those high contact sports, but it's when the kids congregate before and after is when you have trouble. And it sounds like you're willing to reduce the publicity in your stadium. You're also willing to allow more security at the games to kind of make sure that people stay away from each other. So with that said, you've thought about every option, every angle, if it is the desire of the board to go ahead and, you know, start sports for kids. I mean, I know that children need activity, I know that everybody needs activity, but you have to do it safely. And the other thing I would say is you have to know when enough is enough and you've got to be willing to call uncle and say, we can't do this anymore, we have too many sick kids. So with that, I'll shut up because I know you guys have had a long meeting and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Great, any questions for Ms. Skoda? Ms. Autry?
Yeah, I think Dr. Akbar was before me, I just had a quick question.
Yep. Go ahead.
So I, I thought I heard the governor mentioned something about a compliance officer requirement. Is that something you can speak to?
Yeah, what we have been told from that is the compliance officer is the athletic director. It's what the governor's office has told us.
Yes, Ms. Autry, that's true, so I would be the compliance officer. Mr. Ron Linger would help as well, he's our program manager for athletics. And each of our venues would have a site manager as well to be on the ground because there are only two of us and there might be multiple events going on. But we have seen that and we've laid out that plan for compliance to funnel through us in the central athletic department and then have a site manager at each event as well.
So is that just for competitions or is that for practice as well?
The compliance officer is mandated for competitions, for contests.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar?
Yes, Ms. Skoda, thank you for coming to our meeting. I'm wondering, how do you layer on top of what you stated and your recommendations around reducing risk, the, you know, social determinants of health and, you know, the likelihood that, you know, children will get sick? And can you talk about that? You mentioned that it, we have to get to a point where we need to call uncle, you know. So I'm guessing, I'm wondering, it sounds like you, you think that getting, someone getting sick might be inevitable. Is that, am I hearing that correctly and how do you layer on social determinants of health?
Yeah, I think you are correct in that I am saying that children will get sick because anytime you open up any layer in any country that has opened up, any school that has started, we have seen increased cases now. With that said, children, so far, we have seen children have illness, but we have not had, we've had a few kids, I think, that were really sick, but we've not seen the severe illness we see in adults. And that's what makes it such an unknown is because we don't know exactly who gets really sick and who doesn't. I think what you're saying by the social determinants of health here implying- I think what you're saying by the social determinants of health here implying or saying that individuals, minority individuals have been disproportionately affected with COVID-19. And because of the social determinants of health, may not have access to resources and/or jobs and/or health insurance or access, which again complicates matters. I want to be clear about one thing. There is a shortage of testing for kids right now. And it isn't for the, the, not for the lack of trying. Children's has some capacity, Cleveland Clinic has some capacity to test. It is more on the backside of it with some of that lab capability and be able to get kids tested. So we at the health district are setting up testing for kids, for schools, for these situations where we know kids are going to mix, we know we might have kids that are symptomatic. We can no longer think that a cold is a cold, allergies are allergies, you just don't know. And so we're setting up testing at the health district to try to help mitigate some of this. So we can identify quickly, children that might not have access, kids that may struggle to get a test. Once we can identify them, then we can get the appropriate people either quarantined or isolated so that then we can fight the disease and kids can either get back into school buildings or stay. It isn't always necessary to quarantine the entire football team if you have a kid positive or, you know, the entire band, but we won't know that unless we have some good testing. So we're going to set that testing up. It'll be probably live within the next week and we're going to be able to do that testing from the health district and we're working through children's as well to look at expanded testing with some of their school nurses to try to figure out how we can make sure that when we do identify children that could be potentially affected disproportionately than their peers, that we are able to identify quickly and make sure that we take the appropriate course of action so that nobody has to be out of school longer than they need to be or out of practice or anywhere. So we're trying to get that in place right now. I hope that's what you were asking me.
It is, and you actually went to my second question, which was about the access of testing for children. So I appreciate you answering that. When you talk about having access available at the health district for children within the next week or so, would it be available for athletes within our district, for example, to go to get weekly tests? Would that, is that available?
No, personally right now, well, I shouldn't, I should say no now. What we're trying to do, um, not right now because of the backend lab, lab testing, the lab processing capability. This is the, the problem we're running into across the country, not just in Ohio, not just in Summit County. Because Florida has, you know, Texas, those states have had so many issues and it really kind of blown up. A lot of testing went to them, a lot of the reagents. But right now there is, it's getting more difficult to get tests run. In addition to that, some of these labs, like, um, for example, Quest Labs, who has, we have a contract with, gets backed up when they have a lot of the nursing home testing. The state has a lot of nursing home testing. And so when that, it can take six to eight days to get a test back. That's way too long to wait for a COVID test. If it's six or eight days, it doesn't do you any good. By then you've got people locked up, you, you don't know what they're doing. You really can't appropriately manage the disease if you have to lock everybody up waiting on a test result. So right now, testing every week would not work, but we, which wouldn't have capabilities. But we are trying to purchase some machines that will do a 12-minute test that it rules out, if you're negative, you're really negative. But if you're a positive, then we just have to do the other test. So it rules out a lot of the people we wouldn't be testing. So we wouldn't have to test as many, so then perhaps it might become a possibility. But those machines have been very difficult to secure. I know children's hospitals have been trying to get some access to some additional testing equipment. They were told January. It's just increasingly difficult to get what you need to actually run the test. But yeah, if in fact, we got to a point where we had this little quick 12-minute test, we could do all kinds of things. It would be, it would be our ticket to testing.
Thank you so much, Dr. Akbar.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, one last question. Thank you for answering these. So, um, I, I looked on your website, I saw the map that showcased, um, 44310 as having the highest COVID cases in the county, uh, which is the North Hill area and 44320 and 44313, all three of those are in our district. Um, and they have the highest cases, um, in the county. As well as, uh, when you layer on top of that, 48% also shown in a report on your website of, uh, severe cases and hospitalizations were 80, 48% were African-American and 36% uh, of all cases were African-American, which is more than twice the amount of African-Americans who live in Summit County, which is about 15%. And you share, knowing that we have, uh, over 40% of our students are African-American, how do we consider those facts in our decision? And, and how do, actually, how do you consider that in your, um, recommendations that you, you just shared with us?
Well, if you're, you are correct in, um, 10, 20, those zip code areas have the highest. So we've been working again with the National Guard at the state level to do some testing, again, like we did House of the Lord. And our plan was to continue with three more House of the Kind of Lords events all over the county, but then the testing, the lab capabilities dried up. So what we've been doing is working through the National Guard to try to get some additional testing in those areas for identification. But I think in your consideration, I think you should, and we do this too, that look at the population, it's a higher risk population, but guaranteeing, I mean, anyone can get COVID, but what you don't want is the poor outcome. And if you know that if you're disproportionately already suffering more than your Caucasian peers, then you need to take that into consideration by discussing what, how much risk are you willing to accept? So, I mean, that is the whole thing. You have to be comfortable with the level of risk. And I think your athletic director was talking about, you know, and I talked to many parent groups. He said, we're willing to assume the risk, but I think what you've done is smart. You've said, we're going to open slow, we're going to keep kids online for a while, see what this thing does. I can tell you there is a little bit of a bright spot, but it looks like we're trending down a little bit for pediatrics. I don't want to say that too loudly, um, because we have to see that sustained downward trend. But you know, the more you test, the more you find. And so what I would say to it in a nutshell is you know your students best, you know your families best. You guys have made good choices up until now. I mean, so continuing to think about your population, goals you have in place will protect your students as much as it possibly can. I mean, you've done it. But we do consider exactly the population you're talking about, but we have seen severe disease in people you would not expect to have severe disease. So it's just so much unknown, but I think you guys have done a really good job trying to look at risk and, and balance it. And that's all we can do right now, that's all any of us can do, is balance the risk.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your willingness to be open about those responses.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar. We have Bruce, uh, Mr. Alexander, then Ms. McKittrick, Paul, and then Ms. Mansfield. So, uh, Mr. Alexander?
Okay, thank you Donna for, for being here with us and answering these questions. I know it's a long night for you as well as it is for us. But I have, I have two questions and, well, a comment, uh, and two questions. And the, the last question is for you Donna, but the other question is just to be put out there. I, I'm okay with our, in fact, I, I trust more of our coaches and so forth to deal with the kids when they have them there, uh, with them and, uh, they're under their guidance and so forth. But for some, I'm not sure how well, once they leave us, how they're going to be once they, they get back to maybe their homes or neighborhoods or wherever they may be. That's kind of a concern for me with, with our kids. The, the, the question I have, which is the first question for all of us, is are we willing to take the risk of our students to possibly catch the virus? Are we willing to take the risk of any of our kids possibly catching the virus? And then, uh, Donna, a question for you and, and for all, to help all of us with this here. Are we saying that it appears to be okay for our kids to go back and participate in sports? Or is that still a risk?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last part?
I said, are we, uh, uh, so are we saying it's okay for our students to go back and participate in sports? Or are we still taking that risk?
Oh, there's still a risk there. You know, make no mistake, anytime you mix any group of people that have not been together, there is a risk. Because the virus, and, and when you take mitigation strategies, which I think your coaching staff has addressed, but you're exactly right, there is wide community spread and, and a lot, and this is going to be a problem with University of Akron reopening, is that, you know, the university can control the environment all they want to, but most college kids are adults, you can't control what they do outside of that. And that's where the risk is going to come in, is when you have this, let's have a big neighborhood picnic, let's have a barbecue and people let their guards down when they know folks. So it, we have to keep emphasizing and for the students, I mean, trying to encourage students to, you know, be good stewards, and I'm sure the coaches instill a lot of really good qualities in kids. And kids do their dang best to comply, I think, because they do respect their coaches. But I think what happens is, you know, you get into a, a comfortable situation. We've had issues with big, like, family reunions because families start to feel comfortable with each other and they think, oh, you know, Aunt Betsy can't possibly have COVID-19, well Aunt Betsy does. And then before you know it, there's other people that have it. So you have to always think, what is my risk? And how do I protect myself from others and those that are around me? So your children are going to be exposed, I can tell you 100% guaranteed, whether they're playing sports or not. It, there is wide community spread. If you're, you're going to be exposed, it's just how well they mitigate that. Do they wear the, you know, the mask? Do they stay six feet apart from each other? Are they washing their hands? Are they staying away? So you have to layer on all those things and then you can add the risk of what behavior you're going to do. Is it a good idea to go and play sports and then go hang out with a different bunch of kids and play basketball? No, that's not a good idea. If you want to play sports, then you have to keep decreasing your, your risky activities. I mean, all of us should be thinking like, I can take, let's do, you know, I'm going to do three things this week. That's it, because you're trying to decrease the amount of risk you have. Does that make sense, Bruce?
Y- yes, it does, and, and, and because it, it keep, it makes me keep going back to, are we willing to, uh, go with the risk? And I, 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 I don't know what the livelihood or the life, the lifestyles that people live once these kids go back to some of the home, you know? And I guess that's kind of part of my fear that if they, they go somewhere, like you, using the example that you said, that they, they leave practice and all of a sudden they want to go out and they want to play basketball somewhere else with some other people and it could kind of risky behavior. I mean, we have several kids doing that, we have several times that they could possibly get, uh, uh, the virus. And I'm, I'm, that's probably why, that's one of my biggest worries is that we, we allow these kids to, uh, to participate and we're not, we're willing, are we willing to take, allow them to think or, or are we saying, no, we don't want to take that risk? I, I'm, I'm just, I'm struggling with that because I, I'm looking at, I, 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 I'm, I'm very sensitive to, to sports because I'm an ex-athlete, very sensitive, but I'm more sensitive to lives, uh, because without lives, you don't have any sports. And so I'm just kind of, I'm, I'm really torn between it, uh, because I'm still not feeling that it's really safe.
You know, I, I can tell you, you're only going to probably, what's the season now, six games?
About six games, yeah, six to eight games.
Yeah, and then the playoffs. So you know, you're starting, you're layering on your start, so you're getting kids used to the idea of being back together again. So, you know, you can see how it goes, but then just be ready. I mean, a lot of schools are starting, are going to start five days online, but we've told them, you have to be ready to switch to hybrid or remote depending on what happens. And you're right about the lifestyle of people, none of us can predict. I've heard some horrific stories about people, you know, 600-person parties on private residence, but we can't, there's no rule against that. That's not a good choice though. So yeah, you just have to weigh that risk and say, you know, yeah, kids are going to probably get sick because of their cold, kids will get whatever, but they could also get COVID.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a tough, it's a tough place to be. We debate it every day at work, non-stop, looking at data, looking at modeling. It's just because this dang virus is so unknown to everyone. I mean, I could tell you pretty much how the flu would act.
Right.
Or H1N1, but I can't tell you what COVID will do. COVID surprises me every day.
Okay, thank you, I'm going to let someone else get in, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, and again, Donna, thank you for taking time out today. We have just a few more, uh, Ms. McKittrick, then Dr. Hall, and then Ms. Mansfield.
Thank you, President Bravo. Thank you, Ms. Skoda. You talked about some of the unknowns. Can you talk a little bit about some of the long-term medical conditions associated with COVID in children and what the implications are long-term for those kids? Thank you.
Yeah, oh yeah, thanks. What we know right now is more long-term effects in adults. The literature is mixed and I can tell you, this is such a new disease, but there have been long-term, and we have to think about recovery. You know, think about, you know, you think about getting influenza A or B, but this isn't influenza A and B. Most people expect within a month to be back to their, you know, regular activities, you know, feeling better, back to their energy level. But this isn't so true with this disease. Some people tend to be what they dub the long-haulers, individuals that have systemic involvement. Now, there has been some literature around children and cardiac involvement. So in the order, a carditis, an inflammation of the heart, and as you've probably read or heard the news, a lot of COVID is around this inflammation, this inflammatory response that occurs. And so what they're saying about kids is kids too are showing this carditis in the heart if you've had COVID and that before you can return to play, you have to be cleared by a physician. I don't know how feasible that will be, I just don't know. Because I don't know if we know enough about the disease to know that a child isn't at risk. You know, a physician would have to really know what obviously know a whole lot more than I, but they would have to determine whether or not that kid could come back to play. That's in the order. So that could be kind of tricky, um, getting folks to sign off on that once a child does have COVID-19. Does that help at all?
Are there any other medical conditions associated with COVID in children?
Uh, not to come out in the literature that has been, um, quite Uh, not that they come out in the literature that has been, um, quantified. There's some, obviously asthma, some, um, breathing issues, some long effects of pneumonia. Certainly if you're intubated, you can have long-term effects. But the literature has not really confirmed much other than this carditis, this heart inflammation that seems to be a real possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick, Dr. Hall, and then Ms. Mansfield.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. So, um, so Donna, thanks again for hopping on the call. Definitely appreciate it. Um, I, I'll move it back first off to the testing capacity piece. Um, I, I guess as I kind of, it sounds like from what you're saying is that we don't anticipate at any time in the near future having the ability, so let's say hypothetically that we wanted to test all of our student athletes once a week. You're saying that, that the, the capacity, the resources don't exist to do that. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, um, so, so I, and I, I guess what I struggle with is, you know, determining that we have, through our power, right? Appears that the testing abilities are sort of drying up and going away, you know? Um, as you've, as you've already sort of rightly pointed out, students, younger students have COVID. They may have no symptoms, or they may have a low symptom burden, right? Um, so I, I'm just trying to get a, a handle on how we even know when we have COVID-positive students, because, because, you know, you know, and I don't wanna put this on the student athletes to have to self-report, because there's a lot of peer pressure that factors in there, right? You know, a lot of misinformation, like if I come forward and say I'm not feeling well and I've got COVID, now, now my team can't play in their game, or, or I was, or I was exposed to, you know, to the starting quarterback, or four best players, and now they can't play. I mean, that's just a lot of pressure to put on a kid. Um, you know, and so, so, so that's why in my mind I come back to this concept of, you know, what can we do from a testing standpoint to take the impetus off, off the students from having a self-report? I just didn't know, you know, if you have, you know, is there anything that you can offer, uh, that would be helpful or insightful and how we kind of combat that? That, that's my first question.
Okay, um, yeah, that's an issue. It's not been so much an issue here in Summit County. But it has been an issue around the state. Enough to where the governor put in his order that refusal to cooperate with health district around contact tracing or questions, or not saying that you have COVID can result in a fine and a misdemeanor. He actually put a penalty in there. And I think because in some jurisdictions, there is that pressure to not tell so that you don't get in, like, not in trouble, but you aren't in trouble with your peers for taking out. So I think that is, what you have identified is the crux of the problem. In that we can't tell if a kid's asymptomatic. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to on the phone. I've called and said, hey, your test is positive. They're like, really? They didn't even know they were sick. And we use a really good test. I mean, it's about 98%, this, the PCR test, it's, it's the high, it's the best you can use. And we know that if that comes back positive, chances are you're positive, you have COVID. They aren't even sick. They don't even have a headache. So you're trying to figure out a way to, to take that pressure off the kid. I mean, it's just, you don't know. And then what's made it even more complicated is there are these, like, antibody antigen tests out there that the athletes are using, like professional athletes, and they're getting tested, and they're saying if they have COVID, and then they're coming back positive, and those tests, some of them are not reliable. And so the idea is, is to socially distance, wear a mask, and act like everybody has COVID-19 in your bubble. And that's what I think you have to do. There is no way. I mean, you can tell kids, come forward, um, you know, and we can, and if, I'm hoping when we have testing available, and we can get more testing, the kids, if they don't feel quite right, we can emphasize if they get a test. Because some people just say, oh, I was tired for a day and I had a headache. Um, but that was it, and now I'm fine, with a COVID positive. Now, your most contagious, those two days before you probably have any symptoms. The problem is, if you're asymptomatic, if you don't pick up on your symptoms, you don't know. So it makes it very difficult. But I do think there will have to be, for lack of a better word, a way to de-stigmatize saying you have symptoms. Because you will have kids afraid to say anything.
Right, right. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, and then my next question is for Mr. Vassalati, if he's still, still on the line. So I, I know when I was reading through the, uh, the, the, the governor's sort of restart document, the responsible restart document around, uh, for sports. Under the mandatory section, there's a bullet point that says that coaches shall identify players at higher risk of developing serious complications from COVID-19, such as those with asthma, diabetes, and other health problems, and take extra precautions to protect them. Uh, Mr. Vassalati, can you just sort of walk us through how we identify those higher-risk, um, and that last part there about taking extra precautions to protect them? What kinds of extra precautions are we, you know, are we taking to protect those higher-risk athletes?
Sure, that's an excellent question, Dr. Hall. So each student athlete has a pre-participation examination or physical. Uh, so any pre-existing condition like that, be it diabetes, you know, high blood pressure, anything that would make a student athlete especially susceptible to negative consequences from COVID would be, would be evident on that physical exam that they have to turn in. So our coaches would work with the athletic trainer at the building to identify those student athletes. And then I know from coaching, when I used to coach, extra precautions would be taken for, say, a student athlete, uh, was overweight. Uh, so you would be careful in conditioning, of course, not to put that student athlete through exactly the same conditioning that another, uh, student athlete in, you know, much better shape would be, for example. Uh, in terms of COVID in particular, I would, I would hope that our coaches, and we would emphasize this too, that, you know, any, any student athlete is overweight, diabetes, any pre-existing condition that would be really sensitive to COVID, there would be extra care and caution taken with social distancing with that athlete, uh, with cleanliness, uh, with the hand sanitizer, with wipes, uh, with, with social distancing and following all the protocols to a T. Um, because you're right, those student athletes would be more susceptible in theory to negative consequences. So we definitely make our coaches and aware of that, and we're blessed to have, uh, fantastic athletic trainers through Children's Hospital, uh, who would be on top of that as well.
Gotcha, gotcha. And then my follow-up question was gonna be, you mentioned earlier the, uh, the compliance officer component. Um, so whenever you have a compliance program, you know, you, you have a compliance program in, 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 in part to, you know, meet out sort of accountability for violations of existing policy and procedure. So, so in the context of sort of sports and COVID, you know, when you, when you see violation, so for example, if you're the compliance officer and you see a football team that's not, you know, uh, adhering to social distancing, or, 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 or you'll get a tennis team that's not wearing their mask, for example, um, you know, what kinds of, I mean, I guess, what are the effects of that? What are the consequences, uh, when we see those types of violations?
Well, first of all, we would speak with the head coach and make it clear that that would have to be cleaned up and protocols would have to be followed to a T. And if it were to continue, we would shut that team down. Um, we have to make sure that these student athletes know that it's very serious that they follow protocols. I do believe all our coaches are aware, and we would continue to emphasize that to them. But the student athletes themselves, uh, have to follow these protocols, to wear masks outside of the, uh, playing competition area. Um, for example, we put in our, our proposal, our protocols, that our teams, uh, have a curfew. If there's no competition on an evening, they need to be home by 9:00 PM. If there is competition, say on a Friday or Saturday night, they need to be home immediately after that competition. And not go out and hang out with separate groups. Um, or stay out too late. And, you know, and who knows who they're congregating with, and, and that's how virus spreads. We're, we're pleased that in the three months over the summer, we, we did only have three positive cases with kids. And in each case, it, it, it happened just like that. It was brought in from the outside. Um, didn't spread throughout the team. Um, but I think, you know, with, with this debate we're having, and with the emphasis on COVID, and I think our student athletes are realizing how much they miss their sports, that they would take this very seriously and follow those protocols.
Thanks. I, so I think I've got one more question for Mr. Vassalati, and then one more for Ms. Skoda. Uh, Mr. Vassalati, so with respect to that, um, what are your thoughts around requiring, so I, I know that we talked about the waiver already that we would ask parents to sign. Um, but what are your thoughts around asking our student athletes to sign a, um, a pledge? You know, uh, where, you know, where, where each athlete on a team has to sign a pledge, sort of laying out their commitment, affirming their commitment to, to avoid, uh, higher-risk activities, you know, and the like. And we could talk about language, but I'm just saying, in concept, what are your thoughts around something like that, or, or something like that already exists?
We do have a student athlete conduct code. And, and in it, it suggests that they adhere to team rules, uh, 24/7 or face consequences. So we could add to that specifically for COVID this year. And the OHSA form I referenced earlier suggests that as well. That participation is a privilege, it's special. Um, it is voluntary, it's not required, uh, they don't have a right to do it. Um, but it is chosen, not only by them, but from the district and the coaches as well. So if they don't follow protocols, you know, that privilege can be taken away from them. So that would certainly have to be emphasized this year more than ever.
Gotcha, thank you. And then Ms. Skoda, I just had one more question for you. Um, you know, so I know that, that, that we, we talk a lot about how we've seen, you know, sort of, and I think you said kind of knock on wood there, right, that we've seen some declines in the last couple of days. Um, you know, but the, what I struggle with is, you know, again, I work in healthcare as well, um, you know, and so, and I, I know that, you know, as testing supplies become, um, less and less available, uh, basically as our testing capacity becomes less and less sort of robust, um, you know, we're probably not testing, um, as much as we ought to be testing. Um, in fact, I think, I think I saw a, a CDC report at the end of last week that I was talking, that said that they think that we're, at least nationwide, that we're missing, that we're missing eight out of 10 positives, we're missing, we're missing due to not having robust enough testing, which is helping to contribute to the spread. Um, and so they like to use a term called positivity rate, and it's, you know, do you have any data on what our positivity rate is here in, in, in Summit County? Um, and do you have a comment on the impact that the lack of testing is having on our ability to, in fact, um, really know what our, what our community spread actually looks like?
Yeah, um, on the first question today on the governor's call, the governor said that our positivity rate across the state of Ohio is dropping a little bit, not a lot. And it was somewhere around 6%. Now, when you think about Florida and Texas, their positivity rates were somewhere around 20%. To give you some kind of, just a guide, okay, like, so you can kind of put it in perspective. Some states have had much higher. When we've done our testing, it's been about five, about 5%. I would say 4.58 to about, about 5.2. So it's somewhere right around 5% positivity rate that we're getting. However, we're doing limited testing because we don't have the reagent. I don't know what it would be if we tested higher and more. And I don't think, um, that we fully, there's a lot going on, well, let me just start beginning. Some of you may have read an article in The Beacon that our positivity rate was reported somewhere between 10 and 19%. That data set was completely, um, absolutely, it was not a complete data set, it was a subset. The only way you know what your positivity rate is, is if you know how many tests have been done across the entire state or county. The state of Ohio just started to collect that data. August 1, they were trying. We have still been put on hold. Well, I can tell you for a fact, we have never reported any of the tests we have done. So those positivity rates are artificially inflated because you don't know how many negatives you had. Now, there are certain, about in that number that came out that said between 10 and 19%, that was five of the largest labs recording in about 50 hospitals from around Ohio. There's a whole lot more than that that were not included. So the best estimate we have right now is about a five, I would say a 5% is a good guess. Um, and that's where we're at. Now, the state of Ohio was, like I said, the gov said today it's dropping a little bit, um, but we haven't seen the data yet. But it is because lack of testing.
Great, thank you. And then I just had a comment. I mean, I think as, as I kind of listened to the, um, the thoughts, and yeah, I would echo Mr. Alexander's thoughts as well. I mean, I, you know, I, I know that there are folks out there that talk about the low risk. I just think that, you know, we should all be cognizant that the fact that kids are not robots. Um, you know, they're not, they, they can't be pre-programmed, you know, to always stay six feet apart and to always wear their mask, and to never go to their friend's party, or, or to never, to go to a family reunion, or, or to not engage in any kind of risk behavior whatsoever. I mean, that's just, in my way of thinking, that's just a fairy tale. I mean, so, so I think we have to accept that, um, that, that, that we're not gonna be able to prevent or preclude our, all of our student athletes, you know, from, from at least engaging in some activities. They're gonna put some of them at risk, and so, um, so I think as we sort of move, move this conversation forward, I think we have to keep that in the front of our minds. Um, you know, that, I think to Ms. Skoda's point, that, that there's no way that we can, you know, reduce the risk, you know, to, 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 uh, to nil, if you will. So, um, I think, I thank you for the time, Mr. President. I think, I think that concludes my, my questions and, and comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Hall and Ms. Mansfield.
Hi there, uh, Donna. Thank you so much for taking time out of your evening. You know, um, two weeks ago or during our retreat when we talked, I guess that was about 10 days ago. One of the things that I said was the reason that, um, I felt confident in the guidelines that you'd given is that we could pick up the phone and call you, and today we picked up the phone and called you and you came. So thank you so much for, for doing that. I appreciate it so much. It is, but this is above and beyond to sit through, uh, through this group. Um, I, I just wanted to thank you for that especially, and I also want to thank you and, uh, the assistant superintendent also shared today for clarifying that October 1st guidance. Because, um, it makes so much more sense to hear you say that, well, we're talking about, um, you know, in-person learning layered upon sports, or sports then doing in-person learning. But we're not, right? We are, we're holding off, we're being cautious, we're keeping that layer back because of a lot of things. And, um, again, I would point to what the assistant superintendent sent out to us today where she talked about, um, being in an enclosed classroom with a full room of cla, of kids compared to being out in the outdoors and exercising. And so I, I just, I wanted to thank you for clarifying that, how that worked. Um, you've seen a lot of the other districts that are around us go back. Um, have you, have you seen any uptick since they've started their competitions?
Um, we've seen uptick since all of it started from practices.
Okay.
There aren't many, I don't know, I think some of the first games start this Friday. Um, and so we have not seen it from inter, like, inter-school play where they start mixing with each other. Um, we have seen like a positive staff member, a positive coach, or a positive, maybe a parent of a child who had been on a team. And so we've had some of that. And like I said, we've had about six to eight of those instances with about 16 to 17 cases. We have seen some. Um, we've had a few more that have come in over the weekend. That, again, were complicated. They're not just straightforward, like, and, and you have to remember, if you're a contact to a contact, you're a very low risk. So if I live with you and you have COVID, I'm a contact. But the people that have been around are not. So you have to kind of weigh the risk for each layer. Um, so with that, we have seen a lot of worry. And some districts have said, listen, one kid in the band has COVID, I'm gonna, we're gonna just not practice for two weeks. We've had that happen. That's an abundance of caution. You might not have had to do that. I know over the weekend, I talked at length to a soccer coach who had been with children, um, youngsters, who, um, he, his roommate then tested positive, and he was worried, but they had practiced social distancing, they stayed six feet apart. practiced social distancing, they stayed six feet apart, nobody was together. So they really weren't at that much risk. That's why I cannot emphasize enough, if you want to start up again for the benefit of the children, to be able to be active and to get into sports, and really you're only starting some of your high contact a couple of weeks before we had thought it would be safe to go back. But if you, if you're doing that, I just think you have to remember that you have got to stay six feet apart and wear a mask. And you have to do all of the things you said you were going to do. You know, we've seen great plans written, but we tell people they're only plans on a shelf unless you actually do them. They don't do any kids any good. Now, I have to tell you, from the fair, we went round and round and round with the governor's office about the fair and what was it going to look like? And they socially distanced, they kept people apart. We were at the fair every night trying to help people, wear a mask if you don't have one, we'll give you one. And from my knowledge, the fair's been quite a while ago, and we have not had any cases from the fair.
So those layers, those layers helped, those extra layers, six feet social distancing with masks, right?
Yep, those extra layers helped. And the good thing, the best thing about your situation in Akron Public is those athletes will not be going back to school buildings and taking anything they may have picked up back to a school building. Because they're not going to be in school.
Perfect. Thank you for, again, for picking up the phone when we called and for being there for us in this situation. And your staff's been fantastic. I know I've talked to the superintendent and I've talked to Deb Fulk, and we couldn't have gotten through graduations without your staff. We couldn't have gotten through any of the things we've done so far without all of your help. So thank you so much. And you know, on a personal level, you're, I think you're fantastic, so thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. We've all, hey, we're in this together. We all got to get out of this alive. I want to go do something fun, dude, believe me. Nobody's doing anything, okay?
Any final questions for Ms. Skoda? Donna, I just want to echo what you've heard from a couple of our other board members and certainly from our staff. Thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you for being there when we pick up the phone. We appreciate it. And as Lisa said, I don't think I can say it any better, we couldn't be where we are today without you and your staff. So thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. It's not a problem.
Thank you.
We want kids safe and we want kids in school and we want you to do what you do best, educate children.
Thank you.
Hey, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. I'm going to get off now.
Yeah, actually, I have one more question, Mr. President, not from Ms. Skoda, though.
Thank you, thank you, Donna.
Okay, thanks, I'm going to jump off.
Thanks, Ms. Skoda.
Oh, bye.
Bye.
Sure, Dr. Hall, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks. So Mr. Vassalati, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask this one remaining question that was, and it's just more me doing my due diligence. You know, what are your thoughts on moving, for example, contact sports? What are your thoughts on moving contact sports to the spring?
Well, it's not ideal. I'm not saying I hate it altogether, but it's not ideal because, well, number one, you're taking away the opportunity for them to play in the OHSA tournament. So the OHSA and the governor are allowing fall sports to move to the spring if, if the district wishes, but there will not be an OHSA postseason tournament in the spring. So that's one factor. A couple of other factors are that a lot of our fall athletes also compete in the spring in a spring sport. So that would be a conflict for them to choose one or the other. And a lot of our coaches also coach both the fall and the spring. So that's, they couldn't do that. Now, having said that, for our contact sports to move to the spring and play versus not playing at all the entire time of the year, then the spring would be an option, you know, we would, we would support and look into. So thank you for asking that. I know that's a possibility and I know throughout Summit County, I don't believe another district is looking into that right now, but there are a couple of districts throughout the state who are. Thank you for bringing that up.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
So what I did is I actually prepared two different resolutions for consideration. One of them is, well, both of them have to do with the return of fall sports. One of them talks about return of fall contact sports. The other one talks about the return of fall non-contact sports. And it also includes in Section 2 of that resolution, allowing the FAST program to resume activities at the Firestone Swimming Pool.
Sorry, I was talking and I was muted, my apologies. Both of those are located in the board documents. And I think just something for our board to consider, because we had some, I got some questions earlier. We're talking about fall sports now, which is of course why you don't see swimming by itself, you see the FAST program, which is again, not an Akron Public Schools program, it's more about the, their ability to use our facilities. They are under item, sorry, I got a question there, under item 26.1, under the athletics discussion.
Yes.
And we will, of course, have some of these same questions come up as we approach winter sports and spring sports. So wrestling and swimming, for example, are winter sports and fall sports. And so is basketball, which is why you don't really see them. So there, we will have these questions come up again with other athletic activities as we move forward. And I got that question earlier, so I just wanted to leave that out there. So those resolutions then are in there, the contact sports, of course, football, soccer, cheerleading, the non-contact sports, which include golf, tennis, cross-country and volleyball, and then the FAST program allowed to resume activities using our facilities. So those are the two items that are in your board documents. Are there other questions or discussion? Before we would ask for any motions, Dr. Hall, please.
Yeah, I just, I just would like to sort of gauge, you know, my, my fellow board colleagues and kind of get your thoughts on the possibility of moving contact, well, moving something like football to the spring. So I mean, taking into account Mr. Vassalati's concerns about being able to participate in OHSA playoffs and balancing in my own head, some of the risks that we've kind of laid out, that Donna Skoda's laid out, Health Department. I'm wondering what you all think about the possibility of moving the contact sports, like football, into the spring?
As we open it up for responses to Dr. Hall, please let me know if you have one and we'll get you in there. Dr. Hall, for me, I think, I think I would be open to that as if, if the resolution for contact sports didn't pass, then I think, as Mr. Vassalati said, at least for me, then I think that's a better option to not playing at all and gives them at least, as I've heard from some of you, some hope that they can do something moving forward. So I'm open to that if the resolution for contact sports doesn't pass. Ms. Mansfield and then Dr. Akbar.
Thank you. I agree with Patrick. I think that first, the resolution that's before us needs to be, to be looked at. And then if that isn't something that the board decides to go with, I think that we can make a motion to, to look at that. I think that in talking to the coaches that I've spoken to, their biggest concern is the loss of influence, the loss of being able to real, have a real impact on those contact sports players without that carrot of a possibility. And, you know, here's the deal, we can't promise them it's going to be better in the spring, it could be worse in the spring, we don't know. We can deal with the numbers we have in front of us right now, we, we don't know what spring's going to bring. So that's one caution that, that I have in my head about that. Just going ahead and using my time while I've got the mic really quick, one of the things that Donna graciously said is that we're the experts. And what I would say tonight, that we are partially the experts. The biggest experts on the kids who are going to compete in sports are their parents. They know their kids, they know the choices they're making, they're doing that with their eyes open. I think we have to count on the parents to make some of these choices. We are not, we can give, we can give guidance, we can give advice, but ultimately, it's a parent's choice whether their, their students compete or not. This isn't mandatory, right? We're not making everybody do sports. It, it, it's hard sometimes to have choices, right? People can ride motorcycles without helmets. They can do it, it's not a great choice, right? That's a much more dangerous one than what I'm suggesting here. But, you know, when we have, when we're parents and our kids want to run down a hill and we're like, dude, you're going to fall and you're going to end up rolling head over heels and they do, and, you know, you learn a lesson from that. Hopefully, it's somewhere in between with this, right? But we, by taking their choice away, I think that we are making a statement to our parents that is difficult for them to swallow. I think they really, from, from everyone I've talked to, from everyone I've heard from, they are struggling with the fact that they are not, they feel like they are not being given that choice. I do want to clarify too, on the speakers, I saw a few comments online that said, oh, well, only Firestone parents got to speak and the board only had Firestone speakers, people come speak. The people who spoke spoke because they requested to address the board, not because the board picked who spoke. So I just wanted to clarify that. I was a little frustrated watching those comments go through. We've heard from parents from all over the district and, and answered emails and phone calls from parents from all over the district. These are the ones who just took that extra step and said, hey, it's not enough that I just got an answer to my email, I also want to talk to the board. And I think there is, there's also been a lot of talk tonight about students gathering outside of our rules and guidelines. Students are gathering outside our rules and guidelines. They've been doing it all summer, they're going to continue to do that. We can't control what students do outside of the time that they're with us. We can only give them that guidance when they are. And I think what I heard Donna saying tonight too, is that when we do that, it's a teachable moment. That is what we're here for, right? We're here to teach kids and to give them those steps along the way, to give them those bits and pieces that help them to make good choices and maybe show them, you know, maybe it wasn't the best choice that you stayed out till 9:30 when you were supposed to be in at 9:00, so now you can't play this week. But right now, they are gathering together. They're gathering together as, as friends, they're gathering together as athletes. They are running drills, they're running courses without our staff there to help give those teachable moments. They're doing it on their own. I am a little more concerned about, about them doing it without our guidance. So I, you know, I know I'm kind of all over the place, there's so many thoughts that have been in my head for the last couple of days, trying to weigh all of this. Anybody who thinks this is an easy decision is not, has not been paying attention to this board. I, I go back and forth, I'll, just when I think I'm absolutely solid on one thing, I totally sway the other direction. And I guess what it comes back to, to me again tonight, is listening to our local Summit County Public Health Officer actually come speak to us, take her time and say, look, the reason I said October 1st was so that we didn't have school starting right on top of sports starting. We needed that extra layer, we need to see what happens, and we need to be ready to move with whatever happens, right? We need to be ready to, if things are getting better, we open up, if things are getting worse, we close them down. And I'm going to just stop because I don't remember where else I was going to go, but thanks for indulging me, everybody.
Thank you. And I want to get back to our board answering Dr. Hall's question, but also we have a quick comment from Mr. Black, and then we'll move on to Dr. Akbar, Ms. Autry and Ms. McKittrick.
All right, good evening, everyone. I know this has been a long call, but thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to make a quick comment, just a couple of things. One, I know that we all believe that our students are at the top of all the decisions that we make. So understand what's happening in our communities right now with our kids who are at risk of being shot, who are at risk of not having the structure they need to be successful academically and, you know, professionally as they move out of high school. I know we understand the risk of COVID. The unknown of COVID scares all of us. But the one thing that we do know, when we provide structure to our students, move them from the streets and allow for them to participate in a sport that they love, so that they can get back to their friends that they love in a school setting, they will see this as an incentive for them to show their leadership and to prove us right that they are our future and can make the right decision. We provide the guidance, the support and the structure. If when we take away that structure that's been missing from their lives since March, and now we're saying, let's push it to the spring, that's too long for them to manage themselves and for us to stand by and watch them not get back to the normalcy that they deserve. So I hope in making our decision, we remember that we are the ones that provide the structure and the guidance, but they are the ones that allow for us to look good at the end when they follow what we put in front of them and they're successful with doing so. So thank you for letting me speak and I, I look forward to seeing what happens with our vote and how we move our students forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Dr. Akbar?
Yes, so to Dr. Hall's point, I think that if that is something that we need to consider, I'm definitely willing to consider it at the appropriate time. And I do think that we should consider what, what, you know, Ms. Skoda said. Ms. Skoda said that since practices have started, there has been an uptick of COVID cases in children in this county. She also stated that, that there is a disproportionate impact and disparity between our African Americans population. She also stated that children will get sick. And that, she also stated that there is not enough testing for children and that doing testing every week would be impossible. So I think that we do need to listen to what Ms. Skoda said, but I think that it's what are we listening to? And I think that those things that she said to me outweigh that she stated that they made the decision to, for October 1st because of wanting to layer on activities after going back into school. So I think that it's very important that, you know, for me, if we're considering the health and safety of our children, that we, I, I don't want to be responsible for any child getting sick. And she stated that children will get sick from playing sports, but because of the virus and all the unknowns. She also stated that there are so many things that are unknown about the virus. And then when you get, when you get to that point and understand there's not a lot that we know about it, and we also know about the health, risk and challenges that she mentioned, and that we do have a higher proportion of poor health outcomes in our district with the highest rates, as she stated, in the county or within our district. I think that should not be ignored. And yes, we want our children to play sports, we definitely do, but at what cost? And that is what we, you know, are saying. And she stated that we need to, you know, weigh the risk. And I think that for me, the- And I think that, um, for me, the, the risk, uh, of a student getting sick and knowing that most of our students also live or interact with grandparents and knowing the impact that it has adversely on older individuals, um, I, I think that that risk is far too great.
Thank you, Dr. Akbar, Ms. Autry and then Ms. McKittrick.
Thank you so much, everybody. This is very challenging. So, so this board voted several weeks ago and I believe that our will, our wishes were made clear because we passed a resolution five to two on where we stand. So that being said, we were waiting on recommendations from the governor. And, and what I do recall the governor saying is that ultimately, even though we have the go ahead to move forward with sports, it is between districts and families. And as I mentioned, the district made our vote known several weeks ago. So we know where we stand, right? And I don't think it's a question for anybody about the safety of our children, but have we listened to our families? And I know we have heard tonight from many families that are part of the, the private, uh, swim club fast. And while I appreciate them, I don't want that to be an indication that there was no concern on the part of parents of other sports. And also it's not an indictment of the practices, uh, of safety that they have been carrying out throughout the whole summer, as evidenced by successfully going through phase three. So that being said, what has changed for me again is considering the fact that we're talking about approximately eight hundred student athletes. So that in itself is, um, a reduction factor of the risks. But let's be honest, contact or low non-contact sports, there's no 100% no risk involved here. And I really wish it was one resolution, in my opinion. To Dr. Hall's question, um, if for some reason the contact sports, our resolution doesn't pass, I would be open to considering, uh, a move to the spring just to enable that our student athletes have the opportunity to have something of a season. But I do, uh, consider what Vassalati do, to have quite a bit of weight, um, the conflicts with the coaching and students who play multiple sports. And I've heard a lot from, again, other parents, uh, and coaches in regards to mental health. And, and I want to thank, uh, Mr. Black for his comments. I, I do feel like, I live in a community where I have been affected by the gunfire and the violence. I personally am living that. I personally know students who have been affected by this. And I'm not suggesting that our student athletes are going to run out and start shooting up the place. But if this district is in a position to supply an outlet for these young people and we can do it safely under the guidance of Summit County Public Health, then that's what I support. And I also just want to mention and remind folks that we do have Red Oak and Minority Behavioral Health. If you feel like students are having difficulty with mental health. So again, I would, uh, I wish that this was one resolution. I don't feel like we should make an exception for a particular group. And I've heard the arguments as to why we should consider each sport separately. But when I look through the lens of equity, I realize and understand that our young brown and black boys are the ones who play football. So that's where my concern lies as well, because they do deserve an outlet. And I do trust the coaches. I know our families trust the coaches. I know they've been doing a great job. And again, I know over the summer they've been practicing and I'm not sure if we all understood when we did vote previously, that we were abruptly halting their practices and they had been anticipation that they were going to be able to proceed and they have been doing the right things. So I feel, um, that we should allow, uh, the parents to make the call with that waiver being in place. That is important. But not only are we educating students, we have to remember that we're also educating families. Allow them to make that choice for their students.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Autry. And Lisa, I'm not sure. I think we might have lost you, but it looks like you rejoined. And it looks like it was maybe just momentary.
Sorry, everybody froze, so I had to back out for a minute and then come back in. Sorry about that.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure you didn't miss anything, Ms. McKittrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say what an agonizing decision this is. There are no easy answers, only difficult questions. But Ms. Cota did say that it's a matter of when, not if. And she asked, how much risk am I willing to assume? How much risk am I comfortable with? I'm not comfortable with any risk. I'm not comfortable saying that we are knowingly going to put a child or children or their families at risk. I am unwilling to do that. Do I want these kids to have all these activities? Of course I do. Of course I do. But I will not assume the risk. I will not. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McKittrick. Any other comments or questions? Or answer to Dr. Hall's question?
I, uh, put a, I wanted to comment, Mr. President. You must have missed it.
I did not see that in the chat. Go ahead, Mr. Alexander. Sorry, I missed you.
Okay. This is, this is, this is a tough decision for all of us. You know, it's a tough decision for, uh, any of us to, on this, uh, uh, this meeting. There's, it's, it's, it's even tough for some of the parents. I want to address what Dr. Hall's question about will we be, will we be willing to move fall sports to spring? That is kind of tough and difficult. Uh, and I understand that, uh, that the coaching piece would be tough. I understand that it would be kind of tough, uh, uh, for students who maybe play two sports. They wouldn't, they'd have to choose, as Mr. Vassalati said. I don't want to, I wouldn't, I don't want them to, I would not want them to miss, uh, have an opportunity to play for the state playoffs as well. But the, but the, but the thing that it, it keeps getting at me is, and, 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 and Ms. McKendrick mentioned it is risk, that word risk. I mean, I, I keep, that keeps playing in the back of my head, risk. We all take some type of risk for something. But are you going to take a risk to not get your, your roof fixed if you have a hole in it and just let it rain and pour in your house? Or would you take a risk of, of jumping into a lion's den? When you know the lion could, could, could eat you and you may not have life anymore? So I, I keep thinking about the risk and, uh, I, I have a tough time, putting any kids or anybody at risk, uh, at, at my hand. I don't want to, to be the one to have to, uh, uh, have it on my conscience that if something happens, something drastically happened, which I hope it would, would not happen to any of our kids or any other kids anywhere else, uh, who are participating in these sports. But, uh, I don't, I don't want to be liable for that. There's some things I'm not willing to be liable for in life, uh, to put it on my head. I mean, I just don't, 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 uh, wouldn't want to do that. And so I, 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 I do feel for the kids and athletes. I know this is a tough decision. I know we're going to be damned if we do, damned if we don't, you know, either way. But we have to make the decision as to the word risk. What are we willing to risk? Are we willing to risk, you know, the kids possibly getting sick or this uptick? And, you know, we don't know what could happen. Are we willing to risk that the kids are going to, we, we give them that structure in the practice and so forth, but when they leave practice, when they leave the game, we're not, we're not, it's not a guarantee that they're going to go straight home. I'm an ex-athlete and heck, we had curfews, uh, and when we were, we were playing in college sports, you had curfews. Everybody didn't, didn't go with those curfews. There were people sneaking out and going to do other things. I mean, look at some of the professional baseball players of what they done, some of the professional athletes, period, basketball players. So we don't know what they're going to do, uh, once they leave us. We can provide that structure at that time, uh, but we can't provide it once, once they're back in their, their, their home environments or their, their communities. So for me, I, I, I'm just having a tough time, uh, putting the kids at risk. I, I really am. You know, uh, so I hope, Dr. Hall, I hope I kind of answered your, your question. You know, I hope, uh, because I, I, I know you're struggling with it as well. So I, 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 I'm just giving those comments for me and that those, this, this is coming from my heart. This is not, it's coming from my head, but it's coming from my heart as well, because both of those have to be in sync at this point in time, not one or the other. They both have to be in sync when we're making decisions for kids like this here. Although that's my view on, 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 uh, the sports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall. Did you have any follow-up? I know you asked that question and then we moved on. Uh, did you have any follow-up or any thoughts you wanted to share?
No, Mr. President, I didn't. Thanks for answering my question, everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, and then I guess that just leaves me with, I guess, some final comments. And I think I'm with everyone here. You know, depending on where I, which side of the bed I wake up on in the morning, I feel a little more strongly one way or the other and it changes daily. But I also know I'm not the expert. We have experts around us. We have faculty and staff. We have coaches and mentors. We have family members. And so I'm inclined to trust our public health officials, to trust our faculty and our staff, to trust our coaches and move forward in a way that puts that bubble around our kids and helps them to make the right decisions and to be safe. I also don't like the risk. I, I, and none of this is to suggest that, that I'm, that I'm not cautious and, and I'm not thinking about the risk that's involved. But if neither of these resolutions passes tonight, I guess my thought to the board, is this, and because I think we're going to run into the same thing when it comes to reopening school. Uh, and I said this in a meeting earlier this morning. So a few of you may have heard this, but what I'd like to see us do, I'm okay when we as a community decide that we need to set the bar higher. But if we're going to set the bar higher, then I'd like to know where we're setting it. And so we don't have to answer that tonight. But, but we should, none of this feels good. None of the risk feels good. None of this feels as safe as it probably could be, right? The safest thing would be for all of us to quarantine for two or three weeks as a community or, or as a state or as a country and, and knock this thing out. But we're not going to do that. So none of this feels good. And I'm, and so I'm not suggesting that it does. But if we're going to set the bar higher, then I would like to know where we're setting the bar at some point. I'd like to know what we're basing that on. When is it safe to return to sports? When is it safe to return to school? If we're not going to, uh, if, if we're not going to follow the recommendations of Summit County Public Health or the OHSAA or the Ohio Department of Health or the Governor's Office, then we need to set our own metrics. We need to know what those are because we're going to run into the same question when we get to reopening school. And so my challenge to us as a board is if we're going to set that bar at something other than the recommendations of the guidelines that are, that are put in front of us, what are those metrics? And that's just my personal opinion. I, I do favor, uh, tonight, following the guidance from our district and from Summit County Public Health in particular. And Dr. Akbar made some good points. It's, it's not like Donna came on tonight and, and painted a totally beautiful and rosy picture. There are some risks involved to Mr. Alexander's point. But I want to trust our families and our students too, to make some good choices. I want to make sure that we're there to coach and mentor them along the way. And, uh, I want to make sure that we're also not setting up a system where, uh, and I've, uh, and I'm glad that I think Ms. Mansfield brought it up because I've heard, uh, some feedback as well that our students are, are practicing on their own. They're running on their own. They're getting together on their own, uh, but without that extra guidance from us. And, um, and, and so for, for all of those and many other reasons, I, I would favor following the recommendations put forward tonight. Uh, we do have two resolutions in front of us and, um, so at this point, I will entertain a motion on, uh, either of those resolutions if there is to be one.
So, Patrick, do you want them separated out?
Yes, they would need to be separated out. They're put forward as two different resolutions. Ms. Autry, you're moving on which resolution first?
Your resolution for contact sports?
Resolution for contact sports. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. And before we open it up to any comments, I guess I want to make one more, uh, comment. And this is for the benefit of the public. You've seen the difficulty that this decision, uh, has created. And I think you've seen the careful, thoughtful, insightful deliberations that this board has taken. And I hope that as a public, that even if you don't agree with whatever decision comes out of either one of these resolutions tonight, that you know that first and foremost, we're having the discussion because we care about the kids that you've entrusted to our care. And, and that you'll take it, uh, at, at that value. With that, I'd like to open it up to questions, discussions or comment from any of the board members before we vote on the resolution allowing contact sports. Ms. Autry?
I know I, I already stated this, but I just wanted to reemphasize the importance of parents having to say so. I think the parents understand and know where we stand as a board because we voted as such several weeks ago. So where can we be responsive to our families? Uh, where can we compromise and find middle ground? Um, I want to thank Mr. Vassalati and the committee for putting together a plan that we can safely follow. Um, and I, I would, uh, ask that we conserve that, um, so that we can move forward and allow our students and our athletic program the opportunity to show that they can do this successfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry. Any other comments, questions or discussion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Alexander.
So, so we're, we're saying with this resolution that we're moving forward by voting yes, we're moving forward to move forward contact sports?
Yes. The resolution, section one reads, "The superintendent will implement the immediate restart of, of all fall contact sports in parentheses, football, soccer and cheerleading." And that would be according to Summit County Public Health guidelines.
And, and that will start immediately? Yes.
Practices and scrimmages and things will, and then the games will start as they're scheduled.
The games start, is that in September, is that correct? Or August?
Mr. Vassalati? Or Mr. James?
That will be September, September seventeenth, first competition. We will work on the up to that.
September what? I couldn't hear that.
September seventeen.
Seventeen?
Yeah.
Do any other comments, questions or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
No.
Dr. Akbar?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. We have a second resolution for the return of fall non-contact sports. We'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I'd like to make, to make that motion, Mr. Bravo.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second? I will. Dr. Hall, are you coming on?
I'll second it.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for non-contact sports. Are there any comments, questions, or discussions on non-contact sports?
Mr. President, one clarification that also in section two includes the FAST program.
Thank you. Yes, Ms. Autry.
Hi, thank you, Mr. President. So again, I I've made it clear that I wish this was all one resolution because we have to ask ourselves, you know, why are we considering making exceptions for one group over another? Um because I feel as though all of our teams have done what they've been asked to do to remain safe. So I do not feel that um if our own APS students are not going to be, you know, allowed to play sports, I I'm not in agreement with with making exceptions, you know, for a small few, if not all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Just my own personal comment. And I appreciate uh Ms. Autry for for saying that. And for the reasons that I mentioned before, because this does still include golf, tennis, cross country, cross-country volleyball, and the FAST program, uh for the same reasons that I would support on both resolutions, I continue to support this one. Any other comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Mrs. McKittrick?
No.
Dr. Akbar?
No.
Mr. Alexander?
No.
Ms. Autry?
No.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield? Motion fails.
Thank you so much. And thank you again to Donna Skoda for joining us uh this evening. Thank you for members for continuing this discussion. May bring some changes, and obviously we have winter sports yet ahead of us to think about, so discussions as as those items occur. Uh for my president's report, um I'm going to keep it very short tonight because uh we have had a lot of discussion. We want, if you haven't had a chance to get your evaluation in, and the treasurer, uh please make sure to do so as soon as possible. Also, Dr. Akbar and I have had at least a preliminary discussion on putting an outline together as we do um talk about our superintendent's uh search, um which, as you know, and Mr. Superintendent, if I might take a little uh leave because we have uh this item under new business, but because it's also part of my president's report, I'd like to just mention it all together. As many of you know, um as uh as the public uh knows from the article that was in the paper recently, superintendent, um who is our twenty-second superintendent of Akron Public Schools and has been so since two thousand eight, letter of retirement effective uh next year on June uh two thousand twenty-one. Say a few words, um David James has been a stable leader for this district. His efforts have been transformative, um everything from One to World to College and Career Academies to the partnership with the LeBron James Family Foundation on the Ibrama School to uh the renovation or or rebuilding of of nearly nearly all of our uh buildings in in Akron. His imprint on this district will be felt for years to come. And it's with a heavy heart uh that we do need to accept uh his letter of retirement tonight. He's been with this district for nearly thirty years and twelve of those as superintendent, which as our board knows, is 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 unheard of, uh not just here in Ohio, but throughout the country. Um and and a large part of where we are as a district and the improvements that we've made and the transformations that we've undertaken uh have been due in large part to that tenure with us from the business side of the house and then stepping into the superintendent's role in two thousand eight. He's guided us through so much in the last several years. And and thirty years, as we said earlier, when we were honoring our emeritus employees, thirty years is a lifetime uh to pour into a district, to pour into the children and the families that we serve. And so I just want to say thank you. Uh and we appreciate you and we appreciate everything that you have done, that you continue to do and that you will do uh for the remainder of this school year. And we look forward uh to wishing you well in your retirement, but not just yet. Uh and before I ask our board uh if they'd like to make any uh or before I ask our board to uh accept your letter of retirement, which I hope they all both know swiftly on, uh I'd like to open it up to our board uh for any comments.
I think we'll save most of the um happy, excited stuff for um for later in this retirement. We've still got a lot of work to do, Dr. James, so uh you stay here and uh until we let you go. But um we appreciate everything that you've done for us, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much. Dr. Akbar, Ms. Autry?
Yes, I just um wanted to echo what um Ms. Mansfield said and actually President Bravo stated. You know, twelve years as a superintendent is, you know, virtually unheard of. And uh especially in our time where a lot of people hop around. And so that type of commitment is really a estimate to how strong we've been able to be as a district and how we have excelled. And I think it's given us the opportunity today to take it even a step further. Um and so thank you for your leadership uh thus far. And we're looking forward to the rest of this year as we get to celebrate you many other times and maybe make may maybe embarrass you a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Autry and Ms. McKittrick.
Yes, I I just concur with that. I I wanted to just thank you, uh Dr. James, for your leadership. Um you know, not only as a superintendent, but in the Business Affairs Department, you know, that really positioned our district to just have a really strong uh superintendent, you know, based on that. And he's really positioned us to to continue to grow and be a leader in education. I know that this was not a hard uh or this is, I wouldn't want to be in your shoes, uh given the challenges we've had as a district. And just maneuvering us through the COVID epidemic has been phenomenal. Um and it's it's been an honor working with you uh during this time. I know we still have this year to complete, but I just wanted to thank you uh for positioning our district. Um and I do wish you a a great retirement. You deserve that, and thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick, Mr. Alexander, and then Dr. Hall.
Dr. James, thank you very much for your commitment, service, and leadership to this district, especially through a global pandemic. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Dr. Hall?
Okay, David, uh yeah, I I wanted to say thank you. I said, as I said before, when we we were going through this here, that I will save a lot of my comments for a little later because I think that uh uh I think it's more appropriate to to be done when it's in front of uh more people. Uh but I I I want to say thank you for for what you've done. Uh as Mrs. Autry said, for positioning the district, which is important for me because uh what we do for our students is the most important thing for me, doing what we do, what we need to do for our students. And so uh um I like to say that and then, you know, I'll say more later. Uh but thanks, everything. And we do have more work to do, as Lisa said, we do have more work to do. Thank you.
You, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. I just would echo uh the the earlier conveyed sentiments of my of my esteemed colleagues. Um you know, granted, we haven't had a long time to work together, Dr. James, but uh and I was hoping to have more time to work together with you. Um but you know, I think as as I think Mr. Alexander and Ms. Mansfield uh said, um there's still a lot to be done over the over the next uh school year. And um you know, and and I'm going to save all all the all the mushier comments I might make until 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 we're alone together. But anyway, so uh but but I thank you for that and uh you know, for your time and your service. Um you know, as an APS, as a proud APS graduate, um I've had the fortune of my lifetime till, you know, to only really have ever experienced, I think, just three superintendents in, you know, my 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 forty-four years on the planet. So I think that again speaks um both to our predecessors as well as to you uh and this district as to how it's been governed over time. So um I know when this is done, you know, you will take your place, you know, um you know, as one of the um you know, community pillars, you know, that we can hold up. Um you know, and 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 sort of showering praise on 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 how you've served all of us uh 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 over your time here. So um but I'll I'll save my my other mushy stuff for uh for later on, but thank you again for your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you all for your kind words. Mr. Superintendent, we have your uh letter of retirement. I will entertain a motion at this time to accept that letter of retirement.
So moved.
Second, no motion, I mean second, second.
We have a motion from Ms. Mansfield, a second by Mr. Alexander. Roll call please.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
And so with that, uh Dr. Akbar and I will be working together to bring a plan to this board. We're already collecting some information uh and and starting to put an outline together so that we can start talking, uh especially post-evaluation about job description and superintendent search. So we'll be in touch with you as board members uh soon on getting you uh an outline put together. So uh with that, that concludes my report, uh treasurer's report.
No report.
Thank you. Committee reports legal contracts and board policy.
Uh we do have uh one report. We're we're looking to uh waive our three readings for a policy thirty-two twenty, which is evaluation of staff. And this is due to it needing to be uh passed and approved for to move on by September the first. And we won't have our next meeting after uh September first. So therefore, we're actually we waived the readings and uh make a motion that we move forward at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. And we do have policy thirty-two twenty uh revised. And I'm assuming that uh you're also including administrative guidelines thirty-two twenty.
Yes, that's all together.
Okay, um and that's for the evaluation of staff. Those are OTES requirements from the ODE, as Mr. Alexander said.
Correct.
Place uh by September first, uh so we'll entertain a motion for the waiver of of the three-reading requirement.
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. McKittrick and Ms. Mansfield. Any comments, question, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now we'll entertain a motion for approval of board policy thirty-two twenty and along with the administrative guidelines.
So moved. Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Dr. Akbar, a second by Ms. McKittrick. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
I.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Thank you.
Finance and Capital Management?
Thank you, Mr. President. So on seventeenth, the Finance Committee, we did meet um along with uh Dr. Akbar and Mrs. McKittrick. We did have a legislative update regarding House Bill three zero five, which is the Fair School Funding Plan and the possibility of a companion bill in the Senate. A companion bill meaning that would help push it forward and, you know, build on the momentum to get this thing passed. And we are fortunate um to have our treasurer serving uh on that committee as well as a superintendent. Um and the 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 hope is that this new formula is going to be more focused on the classrooms and teacher and student relationships. So a another item uh related to that is making sure we are properly educating our families so that when the time comes, uh we can help advocate uh for the passage of that um Fair School Funding Plan. Um also, um we continued our discussions regarding the levy. We did discuss uh when more information regarding modeling would be available for the board to decide the measure that's going to be needed. Leaning towards a May levy uh date. Um and if we were advised that uh Mr. Pemberton would be able to have that information for us in the next few weeks. Um and also just in regards to uh leaning towards a May levy um so that we would not have to make any mid-year cuts to program. So that is very important so that we do not disrupt our full year uh with that difficult task. And then we um also discussed our district-wide financial information. And I will pass it over to my co-chair, Dr. Hall.
Thanks, Ms. Autry. Appreciate it. Um so yeah, so we so in addition to the items that Ms. Autry covered, uh we also talked uh in detail about um our district-wide financial sort of status. Um you know, those of you who've tuned in to previous meetings, you've heard us talk about you know, our decision to 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 push the levy back. Um you know, with being respectful to sort of what's going on in the community uh to 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 twenty twenty-one. Um you know, and so the the cause, one of the consequences of that is that we are going to run a fifteen million dollar deficit by the end of this fiscal year. And so um you know, so I know that uh you know, not reopening, um you know, may help assuage that a bit. Uh but again, I didn't factor into in into the decision, but again, we're going to have a fifteen million dollar deficit for this fiscal year. I know our treasurer also shared, um you know, we also discussed um or actually, I he he rather, he reminded us that the um the board had passed a resolution back in March um where some of you may recall that we um we voted to continue to pay employees that were unable to perform their duties due to COVID nineteen. Um and so uh we we discussed that that we may need to revisit um that previous resolution. And so I know that I'd asked for a listing of the of the employees that that would potentially be affected by by any changes with regard to that. With next, we also talked about um the CARES Act funding. And so we we reviewed it as a committee, um you know, the the various pots of money, if you will, the SIR funds, the CARES Act funds, for example, um and talked about, really discussed sort of how much money was left um in those funds, um items that we'd spent. items that we had spent some of that money on, and then, and then the timeline that we have in place in which we have to spend the money or basically lose it. So, you know, and I think the other piece too is that we also talked a lot about, you know, the importance that we're on these calls, you know, that we want to call out for you, you know, specifically the various buckets. So, I like to portray it as sort of purpose, time, and amount. So, the purpose that the funds are meant for, the time period in which we have to spend it by, and the amount that we have to spend. So, as we move forward and we begin spending more of those dollars, you know, we'll begin presenting that out to the public and really utilizing that rubric, if you will. And the last but not least, we talked through, you know, really talked about a unit level analysis. And so, we kind of talked about our Forecast 5 portal, and there's various charts and details and whatnot that we can kind of look at to kind of slice and dice our financial data in various ways and group it in different ways. But again, you know, but again, you know, we'll be looking to review more detailed information on items like special education, racial equity, spending and demographics in our various clusters, equity and finance, you know. So, that is to say, you know, thinking about how do we ensure that we're spending dollars in a way that that's equitable in our school district? So, we know that certain groups and certain demographics, you know, will require more expenditures in order to make things equitable. We talked about, and the last but not least, you know, we talked about sort of spending versus success, student success, you know. So, linking the dollars we're spending and really saying, well, what's our ROI, you know, as it relates to student success? So, we know that we're spending dollars, but how's it linked to sort of ROI? And so, while there's a lot of work that's already happened with regard to it, and there's a lot of metrics in place for that, you know, we've, you know, continued to have the conversation as to how we move that forward, and how do we potentially develop different metrics or alter existing ones? You know, so, and then last but not least, you know, I know the committee agreed that we wanted to have some time to further review the robust reporting that's available for that Forecast 5 tool, which we're working on, we're working on a date for that now. So, and that would conclude the, I'm sorry, the Finance Committee report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hall and Ms. Autry. Instructional policy and student achievement.
Just a couple of things. First, we'd like to welcome back all our educators. Today was their first day back. And second, to our fellow board members, there is an email in your box about textbook doctrine. We have one for dance and one for anatomy and physiology. And there, in your email, there is a link so that you can peruse those materials. Thank you.
I'll just share real quick also, please take a look in the instructional policy if you didn't get a chance to watch the two videos that are linked to our eighth grade showcase for showing off our academies. They did some really great work, went into those, and they only take a few minutes to watch. Also, we had an update on I Promise School, and I just couldn't let the night go by without congratulating LeBron on his bestselling book. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And at this time, there is a need to recess into executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.224, 121.224, to review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms and conditions. At this time, entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you so much. We have a motion, Mr. Alexander, and a second by Dr. Hall. Any final comments, questions, or discussion before we recess?
I have a comment, but it's not about the recess necessarily.
Go ahead.
Okay. I just wanted to say that I think that today we experienced a moment where, you know, we were challenged in many ways. And when we talk about equity, and when we talk about racism as a public health crisis, they can't just be words on a piece of paper that we have to live them, their actions. And pressing equity and questioning the status quo is uncomfortable, but it's necessary in order for us to turn that corner. And today, we did basically vote to allow deficit-laten ideology into, and process into our district after we stated that racism was a public health crisis and that we were committing ourselves to equity and racial equity. You know, even our own diversity director stated that she wasn't, she hadn't reviewed the, the, the process more in depth. And I think that that's important as we move forward, that we have to be willing to be uncomfortable and be challenged because we can no longer take actions that allow us to continue down that same road. And the last thing I'll say is, I think we've talked about, you know, trusting experts and, you know, being an equity expert requires some level of training in many cases, and it requires you to think differently and to see things differently. And, you know, our board does have the privilege of having an equity expert on the board, and then we have an equity expert in the district. And I think it's very important that we utilize that talent and we utilize that because it will allow us to take this up to the next level. And I don't think that we did ourselves any justice by moving our racism is a public health crisis work for, or our commitment to equity. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we have a motion to recess into executive session. We did have a first and a second, yes. So, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. If we could all remember to completely log out of this meeting, we'll see you in executive session. We will have one item to consider when we return. Thank you. Thank you, and welcome back. If you are joining us again, this is the continuation of our regular meeting for the Akron Public Schools Board of Education for Monday, August 24, 2020. We've just returned from executive session, and we do have one final item for consideration, and that is a resolution for a tentative agreement between the Akron Board of Education and the Akron Association of Classified Personnel Employees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Ms. McKittrick, a second by Mr. Alexander. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Autry?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Dr. Hall?
Aye.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Sorry, yes.
Mrs. McKittrick?
Yes.
Dr. Akbar?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. At this time, with no other business to come before the board, we'll entertain a motion for, motion to dismiss?
So moved.
So moved.
You know what, I'm getting sleepy. All right, we have a motion and a second. We are adjourned. Thank you so much for joining.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Good night.